What is going on? What is happening?
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmandy.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
All right, we're nine for nine. I'll take a motion on the Consent Agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept or approve Consent Agenda items 3A through 3L and 3N through 3EE.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from 3I.
All right, Madam Clerk, did you get that? Thank you. All right, moving on to, there are no items removed from the Consent Agenda. Moving on to public question and answer. Is there anyone, sir? Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Carbone, Twin Pines Drive. I'm here this evening in hopes that I can provide a unique perspective on the current status of education in our town. I'm a product of the Wallingford School Systems, a resident, a building principal for the last eighteen years, the last five of which have been at Mary G. Fritz. I first would like to thank the members of the Council who have spoken about the challenges in education and the importance of funding the budget. It's my hope that I can help provide some clarity on the metrics being used to gauge the effectiveness in our schools. I'm hopeful this information can shift the rhetoric from comparative comments about years ago in Wallingford and broad-brush statements that call the Wallingford Schools mediocre at best. It's important for everyone to know first that the demographics of the town are changing. The state of Connecticut classifies students as at-risk if they're multi-language learners where English is not their first language, if they receive free or reduced lunch, or identified students who receive special education. Since 2014, the percentage of students that meet this classification has risen from thirty-one percent to forty-seven percent in our town, or twenty-five hundred students. And while I hear constant comparisons to our academic achievement related to towns in our DURG, of the twenty-four towns in this group, only a handful have an at-risk population as large as ours and even fewer districts in our DURG surpass the number of at-risk students that we have now in Wallingford. The most popular metric used for achievement is Smarter Balance, which is a computerized test given to students in grades three through eight to measure their ability in math and language arts. The test is designed to measure college and career readiness in students as young as eight years old. Keep in mind, the test measures grade-level standards and it is not adaptive for students who have documented disabilities or part of specialized programs, or students who speak a second language, but their scores are included. The standards themselves, since the inception of Common Core, have pushed expectations for student learning higher than ever before. By the end of the year, kindergarten students are being asked to read emergent-level texts with purpose and understanding, even though the research shows that developmentally not all children learn to read in kindergarten or even in grade one. Fourth graders in math mechanics are required to explain why fraction A over B is equivalent to a fraction N times A divided by N times B using visual models. The Smarter Balance test requires a depth of thinking beyond simple multiple-choice questions and when the results are reported into media and analyzed in online social media forums in town, there is a single binary metric that's used of anyone who passed or received a three or a four. The rest are viewed as failures. Our student demographics have changed, the standards have changed, the assessments have changed, but the mindset on how we measure success has not. I can think of no better example than a student I had in grade three. She enrolled in my third grade speaking three words of English a few years ago. Most recently, on her fifth-grade Lost Links assessment, she showed outstanding growth falling in the intermediate range on that test. When you check her Smarter Balance results, she will not have passed and she will be considered a failure. It is far from the truth. I urge you all to shift the conversation to a greater emphasis on student improvement. What about students who started at a one, the lowest level, and now are at a two? Perhaps we focus on a different measure such as the I-Ready Assessment that students are given at the elementary and middle level three times per year. That test actually adapts and shows how students perform in language arts and math for their own personalized goals. We can use the Lost Links Assessment for our English learners and look at IEP goals and objectives for students in special education. Ladies and gentlemen, no other profession in education is like ours and comparisons to a business model are simply unfair. We do not choose our clients, our clients choose us and we have the privilege of welcoming every student and their family to our schools with open arms just as they are. We cannot decide simply to not fix someone's car, not treat a patient, or not represent someone in court. We just can't restructure the company. No doctor has cured every patient, no lawyer has won every case. This does not mean they are not competent and the same is true of our administrators and educators. Nonetheless, anyone who has gone to school, raised, lived with, or spent time with a child feels qualified to say how we should educate them in 2024. What people do not understand is that we are locked in by contracts and costs and rely on a community that can understand and support that this is not 1985 where kids painted, played, did book reports, and made dioramas. Educators in this town want all students to achieve mastery and all families want that for our children. But it's like asking an educator to get every child to the tenth floor of a building using nothing but the stairs. It doesn't matter that there's no elevator for those in wheelchairs, no additional time for those who climb slowly or simply aren't interested in making the climb, and no grace given to those who have visible backpacks or so heavy from psychosocial stressors in their personal lives that they just can't see the purpose of the climb. I know my time is up, but there's one last thing I would like to share with you. Right now, the Board of Education is waiting for this budget to get finalized and then may have to wait for a veto that may or may not come and then another potential vote just to complete the process. Meanwhile, neighboring towns, those ones in our DURG who we're compared to, are interviewing recent college graduates taking the best candidates to fill their vacancies. They're snapping up seasoned teachers who are relocating to the state of Connecticut and need a job for next year and by the time we get to any potential hiring, those applicants are long gone. Hiring and retaining the best people is one of the single most important factors in education. Maybe it's time for Wallingford to look to revise its charter to streamline this process and give us an opportunity to compete. We know that the hallmark of a strong educator is to be reflective and I stand here and I say, I believe we can do better. We can always do better. No one is satisfied with our results. I just ask that the lens with which we view the progress of our schools needs to be refocused to reflect the current state of education, the systemic factors that impact achievement, and the changing demographics of our community of Wallingford. It's on those metrics that the decision to provide funding should rest. I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carbone. Anyone else? Mr. Chardello?
Paul Chardello, Two Bayberry Drive. Before I comment, will we have, will the public have an opportunity to discuss-
Can you just speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
Can't hear me. Will the public have an opportunity to comment before you vote on your budget?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll just make a couple of comments and I'll be back. I have some issues on the budget as well.
Okay.
But I was hoping this year with a new administration and a new council that we would have a somewhat of a different budgeting process that we've had historically under the old administration. One that's more transparent, one that's more accurate, and more realistic. And when I heard that the council was about to vote tonight on a, I think it's a $5 million tax increase, it may even be higher than that now. I guess we added some money in last time. I have to say that considering where we're at economically, inflation, et cetera, that in my opinion, that would be punitive. That's how I feel about it. And I think that the reason I'm saying that is not so much because of the money, but it's because it's in support of what I feel has been historically and still is, a very inflated expense budget and a process that supports that. So that's my comment for now. I'd like to come up before you vote on the budget.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, moving on to item number six, Discussion of Old Business. Mr. Farrell, do we have any update on Henbrook Lane?
Still being worked on by the Law Department. There's been nothing resolved. The office has talked to the attorney, Attorney Fishbein, and we hope to resolve it, but it may take a little pressure. It's not resolved yet.
Okay, thank you very much. And then update on technology. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Andrew Winters did begin working as Director of Information Technology. He started on May 6th. And also, late last week, we received the results of the technology assessment from CLA in draft form. We are reviewing it for security issues and as soon as we've isolated security issues, we'll be publishing it to the council. And that should happen any day now.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much. Onto item seven, Discussion in Action Regarding the Board of Education Contract with the Managers Union. Okay, if you could kindly introduce yourselves for the record.
Sure. Danielle Velizzi, Superintendent Wallingford Public Schools.
Good evening. Fran Thompson, the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel.
Abenek Barone, Business Manager for Port Event.
Good evening. Did you guys have something you wanted to start with or did you want to just take questions from the council?
It's up to you, Counsel, whatever you think is you'd like to do.
Why don't you present, why don't you present the contract and we'll go from there. Thank you.
So this, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to share the outcome of the Managers' Contract for the Board of Education. The Managers' Union consists of three members, our Facilities Director, our Information Technology Director, and our Nurse Director. I want to thank the Board of Education members, Mr. Doring, Ms. Reynis, and Mr. Vado, who served on the negotiation team with us. And the outcome of this contract is a 2.5% general wage increase each year. There was an increase in the HSA annual deductible in the first year by approximately $250 to $500 depending on the plan. Again, hold steady for the three years and also the premium cost share increased to 21% and that stays over the, each year of the three-year plan. One of the components of the plan that we are negotiating included the prescription plan edits and thanks to the collaboration with our insurance carrier Anthem, we were able to negotiate three edits to the current healthcare plan. That includes an exclusive specialty program, specialty drug rules, and a cost relief program. And these edits, we potentially, we project a savings from these prescription edits of about 2.9% over the duration of the contract. So I want to thank Anthem for coming and meeting with the union and explaining what those edits would entail.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much a question, but more of just a statement on the contracts in general. So this is a small, small apartment unit, so only three members. But I just wanted to explain because I came up during budget season about contracts and how that affects the budget. So we're about to vote on a budget with a massive tax increase, due mostly in part to Board of Education spending. We were told during the budget season that the council approves contractual increases and raises but fails to fund them. So I just wanted to run through, just for the sake of everybody, how the process works. So the Town Council has nothing to do with contract negotiations. We do not participate and we typically have no knowledge of what occurs until the deal is done. So last Wednesday, we received a copy of this agreed-upon negotiated contract with our agendas and one half hour before tonight's meeting, we met with the Board of Ed, Town Administration, including the mayor. Typically, the HR department is there, the Board of Ed and central office staff are also there. And we have about thirty minutes to ask questions and no one from the other side of the negotiating table is present. So this is standard, this isn't Board of Ed, this is for all contracts in town government. Then at the council meeting, we only have the opportunity to deny a contract. So we don't approve contracts, we can only deny. The council does not approve them because they're already approved by the process of the negotiations and signed by both parties. So we only have the opportunity to deny if we see a major flaw. So therefore, we're put in a position tonight and each time a contract is before us where we, you know, we just discussed for several months how the education budget is unaffordable, many of us think, and will result in another similar increase next year simply to sustain wages. But then we're presented with yet another wage increase on top of the one that we already kind of identified as unaffordable. So we're in the position now where we either deny a contract that was negotiated in good faith by both parties and we send it back to the drawing board, which will probably not yield positive results for either side, or we approve it and are, well, we don't approve it, but we could not deny it and then we're faced with the same allegation next budget season that we've approved contracts but don't fund them. So it's kind of a no-win situation for us. I mean, I'm not going to vote to deny this most likely because I believe it was negotiated in good faith by both parties and it's a fair compromise. I think it's a fair contract. But it does put us in the position to have to go through the same budget issue again next year with an even higher increase. So I just wanted to kind of lay out how that process works, just so everyone understands going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Nice to see you all. So one of the changes is to the sick leave provision and I'm specifically looking at page eight of the revised contract. In new language, so certainly at the bargaining table, this was discussed. We have this sentence. It's dealing with how many sick days an employee gets. We have this sentence. "Five of such days may be used for illness of an immediate family member." So I take it that the employee is not sick, but their family member is and therefore we are affording that individual the ability to take that day even though they're not sick.
Correct.
That's fair. What is an immediate family member?
It is, well, it's not, it's not defined in this.
That's a problem.
Well, in other contracts, we do have it defined in terms of parents, children, somebody residing-
Why would you have it defined in another contract and not this contract? Because how does the supervisor for this individual know? Because the person who they're talking to on the phone doesn't have sniffles, they're not coughing and that kind of stuff. They're saying that an immediate family member does and therefore they're affording themselves the ability. If we don't give guidance through the contract, how does one make, I mean, boyfriend-girlfriend, is that an immediate family member? I don't know and respectfully, you guys don't know and we don't know what the union thought either that that term meant. So that's a problem.
Counselor, that's a fair point and given the small number of members and the relationship we have with the current members through this contract, that is something we should look at for the next time around.
Well, you know, I have not been happy with your legal representation for many years and I know one of the items, I believe we waived the bid tonight for you folks to get lawyers. There's not a lot of changes to this contract. It's only, I think the contract is fourteen pages long.
Right.
But any lawyer who is representing my Board of Education should have flagged that. Shouldn't be my responsibility. I mean, so it's not necessarily you guys, but it's the guys and gals that you're paying tens of thousands of dollars to guide you. Have, that's a problem. Another provision that I know we discussed before it came out here appears in the very next paragraph. We have this clause having to do with workers' compensation and how long one can collect.
Right.
And I think the thought process, although the backup, your sheet says it's capped at twelve months, I think we agree it's not capped at twelve months. It's at the most, I think the intent was to cap it at fifteen months. But the problem is, is that we have this sentence, "In no event will such payments continue more than twelve months with a three-month extension", so on and so forth. That is not artfully written. There is no provision in here as far as the procedure to ask for a three-month extension. That is usually how we write contracts. Utilization of the word "with" is perhaps inappropriate also. "In no event will such payments continue more than twelve months without a three-month extension", or no more, I mean, you know, or it's capped at fifteen, I mean, it's just, it's not a lot of words and it's just not written properly, in my opinion. You know, the other provision we talked about behind closed doors, I'm not going to flag that here, but I think you guys understand. I, I would hope, and you know, I've done soft on this, but it's quite obvious to me that you guys are not getting proper representation. So whatever you're going to do with that, I think it's getting more and more apparent to me. I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Members of the public? All right, not seeing a motion? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight, Adoption of the Fiscal Year 24-25 Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the total general fund revenue budget of $197,417,791 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I already said, you know, got into the, you know, into the weeds with this at our last meeting, but I just wanted to say briefly why I'm not in support of this budget. This is the largest tax increase in the past twenty years, possibly in the history of Wallingford. My research only went back twenty years. I am not in support of this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, you know, my only comment is, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails in support of education. I've gotten a lot of email opposed to education. I guess my message is, I think we're all in this together. So even though I'm not going to support, you know, the motion as made tonight, I think from an educational perspective, we're all in this together and I think the achievement of students should be a priority for all of us. The comment I got from most, you know, I've talked to a lot of council members and board members about the education budget specifically. I think we all kind of see the same issues and the same problems. That's not to say that they're easy to solve just because we can identify what the problem is, but I think we need to, this is something, the request I've had from multiple people on the council is that the council wants to take a bigger role in education going forward and sort of the administration of education going forward and take sort of a deeper dive into some of what happens, you know, on the Board of Ed and administratively, which I think is excellent because I think anytime spent talking about education, you know, it's better for our kids and it's better for the whole town. So, so my pledge from this point going forward is, well, I'm not supporting this this year. I think we're going to begin the deep dive, you know, more information and perhaps we'll see where this brings us to next year. So with that being said, any other discussion? Mr. Testa?
Yeah, I would just like to go on record as not, as being surprised at a comment that you just made, that there are a bunch of people up here that want to take a deep dive into how the Board of Education administers the school system. That's not our job. You want to, and I, at last meeting, I made a pretty far-reaching suggestion that we work with the board on a potential early retirement plan because that's something that we might be involved in assisting them in funding if we all work on it together. But what you're suggesting is to, I can't put this a better way, sticking our nose where it doesn't belong. It's not our job to run the school system. It's not our job to tell them how to spend their money. And while we want to know how they're spending their money, we want to work collaboratively with them to imply that we want to get, start working closer with them to decide, you know, to, I don't know, to help them decide how to spend their money? That is just not our role. By state law, it's not our role. So I would just caution everybody to, you know, temper your expectations, temper your, what you're looking to accomplish and realize that, yes, we have a very difficult job. realize that, yes, we have a very difficult job. I agree. We are passing potentially extremely, a larger tax increase than we have, as far as I can recall, as well. But we should have understood the reasons for that. And if we start talking about this in ways that we want to get involved in the intricacies of how the board budget is managed, then we're, we're stepping outside of our role. We have to have the fortitude, or lack of, to sit up here and say to the community, "This is what we feel is going to be necessary to support the Board of Education's mission." Or feel, and I don't, I'm sorry for saying fortitude, because being against it also is an expression of fortitude. So please, understand that. Pro or con, it's an expression of principle, and I respect either side. But that's where it ends. We tell the community, we, our obligation is to fund the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So respectfully, if you'll allow me, respectfully, I think that the, you know, every year we go through the same exercise, right, which is the public comes up or members of the public come up to us and say, "You're not funding education properly," right? And so when I was on the Board of Education, I had a sense of whether we did or we didn't. And I voted for and against some budgets. So I guess to sit here and say that we are or are not, with the amount of information, you know, we go through, it's like the swallows coming back to Capistrano. Every year, we go through the same exercise, right? And so, and you know, I'm so far removed from what the board does at this point that I'm not certain that we are funding them correctly. But I'm willing to go where the data takes us. And if the, you know, if I make statements like we have, well, I don't, let's not get into the particulars. But, you know, I've made some statements here that I know some people maybe took umbrage with. And so I think for my own satisfaction, I want to figure out if those, do those statements carry weight? Are we funding education properly or aren't we? And if, if the problem goes deeper than funding, if there's structural problems, then those need to be addressed as well. You know, we spent a lot of time talking about the one high school thing. And however you feel about it is fine. But like, when you look at the numbers, the data, middle school is the, is the biggest issue, followed by the three to five schools, right? And I even hear members of the council talking about the middle schools. So it's like, how do we get so diffuse on this sort of one project when we know where the, the problems exist somewhere else? So I guess that's where I'm, I'm not, I don't work for the school district, right? So I don't have the sort of view that, that other folks do. But I'm a parent in the district and I've been up here a long time. So, so that's where I'm coming from. I'm more of a concerned citizen, you know, than anything else, respectfully.
Nick to Mrs. Allison.
So I take your statement, Counselor Marone, to be sort of in good faith, right? So, and this stems out of a conversation that I had with a few people. And my comments here are stemming from a conversation that I've had with a few people. And my observation to several of those folks was, if we have an interest, right, if we're doing a job, if we're working on a project, if we have a coworker or a family member who we're responsible for, or that person is expected to deliver something to us, but we take no interest in them until there's a problem, then we're as much at fault as, as we would be holding them accountable for. I don't see many people on Board of Ed meetings, and I was on the Board of Ed three years ago. I don't see, I know that we record meetings now, but historically, that was not necessarily the case. Everything is out in the, in the public realm for people to observe. If you have concerns about the way that, the way that spending or schools are being managed, we have all of the technology. Board of Ed has more technology than the town of Wallingford at their fingertips. You can pick up a phone, you can pick up an email, you can call any member of the Board of Ed, and they will give you their own opinion and rundown on how they see the situation that it, at, at hand to be taking place. If you have, and, and I compared this to putting an employee on a PIP, it's, we're not putting the Board of Ed on a PIP, but the comments were largely negative last week. And of course, I tend to take umbrage with that a little bit, only because, that's a great word, Counselor Tatta also, because now it's twice in this meeting we've said it. Because the Board of Ed does, does an amazing job of running our schools and doing the very best that they can for students. Wallingford Public Schools does a very good job of doing their very best. And if we think that best could be different, then it is in our interest to observe the meetings and ask the questions. You do not get to have a result if you do not do the work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Regan?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few comments. When going through this process, at least for me, for the first time, I was curious as to the lack of interchange within the board. Going through, they present, we accept, we deny. Our job as a council, in my opinion, is not to teach the students, not to direct the Board of Education how to teach students and be better educators. Our job as a council is to work together. I know it's been talked about, let's do workshops together. That would be great. Kind of wonder why we never did those to begin with. But if we go through this process, provide a potential cost optimizations for things that you don't know that we know, and vice versa, or take a look at perhaps constructive criticism from the collective body, both of us, we'll all be in a better place. So that's all I have to say. I am in support of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Regan who said it better than I did. Anyone else on the council? Any members of the public, comments on the budget?
Paul Shardulo, Two Bayberry Drive. I guess, you know, I made the statement that I, I felt that the, the budget was inflated expense-wise. And I felt that, I felt that way for a long time, and I've expressed that. And what I want to try to do to demonstrate it, and hopefully it'll be clear. If you look at the page three of the budget book, and look at fiscal year 23, which only ended this past June, we spent $175 million. Now, by the way, I was here last year at the public hearing, and I made the same argument. And at that time, I pointed out that I asked the question of why don't we have a budget column next to the actual performance for fiscal 23? I didn't get an answer. Now, if you look at the budget for 23, you see that the budget was $180.7 million. I don't know, maybe that's why they didn't put the budget numbers there. So we underspent this last completed year in June by $5.4 billion. So you carry over to the current fiscal year, and typically, the previous year is a foundation for the next year. And the current year, our budget, original budget, is $186.8 million. And one of the key assumptions, I believe, in that 186, is that the previous year budget, we would spend up to that number. But we didn't. We came in 5.4 million under. So that 5.4 million should be reflected in the current forecast for the current year. We actually adjusted it up. And I understand I'm looking at the macro numbers, but you have to look at the macro numbers first to understand which micro numbers to look at. I also went back and looked at 2023. And this is interesting. The Board of Education, which is two-thirds of the budget, was spot on. The budget was 110, 109.9 million. They came in at 110, which is excellent. But historically, by the way, they have come in under budget. In fact, that's one of the reasons that I guess we created a special fund a few years ago. They came in under budget and rather than putting it into general surplus, we said, "Hey, let's create a fund." We have funds everywhere. That's tax money. But the Board of Ed did well. General Government came in at $65 million, which is 5.6 million under budget. That's 8% under budget. So those numbers should be reflected. The 2024, this year's numbers, we should cut that down by 5 million, no problem. Just from a macro point of view. Where someone has to explain, where's that extra 5 million that we're spending? And that ripples through to the current forecast for 2425 of $195 million. This is notwithstanding the education change we're talking about. So these numbers are just, they don't add up, simply stated. And I believe it's the council's responsibility to make sure that the administration gets all the money it needs, but only the money it needs, not a penny more. That has not been happening historically, I don't believe. And I don't think it's happening in this budget either. And I think that to look at a tax increase like this, which is not necessary, puts an added burden on the working-class families in Wallingford. Actually, we're, we're actually pushing them out of Wallingford, actually, when you consider the downturn in '07 and inflation. But this doesn't help. So that, that's my, that's my point of view. On the revenue side, 2023, we actually came in with $4.6 million more revenue. This is after we put 6.4 in there from the general surplus fund to balance the budget. Why we do that, I have no idea. No other town does it, as to my knowledge. The only reason that I can think of for putting it in there is it makes it a lot easier to justify a tax increase, because we know we're not going to spend the money, and we never do. The money goes right back in. In 2023, we took 6.4 million out to balance the budget. We returned 10.1. That's not right. So as far as the, my recommendations are concerned, I, my recommendation is that the council eliminate the tax increase completely and reduce the general government budget. You could do it across the board on a percentage basis. It's 3.65%, whatever it is. Reduce everything. You're not hurting anything. If the mayor needs more money, he can come back and ask for it. What we do in Wallingford is we give the administration more money than they need, which is a bad practice, in my opinion. It incentivizes profligate spending rather than giving them what they need and saying, "Hey, if you need more money, come back and ask us." And I think you have an opportunity to flip the whole process around tonight if you'll, if you want to do something like I'm suggesting, eliminate that tax increase and approve the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Okay, going back to the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Harmanji?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
And I vote no, but the motion passes.
You guys are going to hear from me a lot today. I move to adopt the total general fund expenditure budget of $197,417,791 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024.
Any, uh, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Second.
Seeing no, any members of the public? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Allenson?
Yes.
Harmanji? Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Marone?
I vote no, but the motion passes.
I move that we establish the property tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 at 30.93 mils. Real estate and personal property taxes, taxes in excess of $100 shall be made in two installments, the first of which is due on July 1st, 2024, payable on or before August 1st, 2024. The second installment shall be due January 1st, 2025, payable on or before February 1st, 2025. Real estate and personal property taxes of $100 or less shall be paid in one installment due July 1st, 2024, and payable on or before August 1st, 2024, as provided by Connecticut Statute, Chapter 204, Section 12-144. Motor vehicle taxes shall be made in one installment due July 1st, 2024, and payable on or before August 1st, 2024, as provided by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 204, Section 12-144A. Delinquent motor vehicle taxes shall be paid only in cash or by certified check or money order, as provided by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 204, Section 12-146. Property taxes in an amount of less than $5 shall be waived. Checks in payment of property taxes, checks in payment of property taxes which have been returned by the bank shall be subject to a $35 fee.
Second.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Wait until this one.
All right, discussion on the motion? Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the mil rate, so the proposed mil rate is 30.93 mils. Since I've been on the council, this is my, it's my fifth budget, one of the, one of the goals I kind of set for myself as a counselor was to try to keep our mil rate below 30. Obviously, this year, it's not looking like that's happening. But I just want to go over the past several years of where we've kind of been able to keep that mil rate under 30, and what the, the effect on that was, dollars and cents. So if we go back to, I'll pull back maybe four years here. So if we go back to 1920, the budget year of 1920, the mil rate was 29.19. Looks like in that year, the surplus ended be, ended up being $2.4 million. We kept the mil rate the same the next year. In '20 and '21, the mil rate remained at 29.19. That year, we ended up with a deficit of $1.6 million. In '21, '22, the mil rate went up, I'm sorry, the mil rate went down. That was revaluation. So that, that's the cause of some of that, but also with the council, what our amendments were, there was a veto, we overrode the veto that year. The mil rate went down to 28.52. And in that budget year, we ended up with an $896,000 surplus. And then we have '22, '23, the mil rate went up to 29.04 from the 28.52. We ended up with a $2.5 million surplus. The current year, we obviously don't have the results of yet. We're still in that, but our current mil rate is at 29.34. our current mil rate is at twenty-nine point three-four. So this is bringing that up to thirty point nine-three. As I said before, I went back twenty years of data, this is the largest tax increase in twenty years. I could have, I guess I could have gone back further. I don't know that there was any other tax increase in Wallingford history that was, that was this high. Based on the surpluses and those mil rates I just went over, obviously, some years, you know, there's deficits, some years there's surpluses, but the general fund is increasing. Twenty years ago, there was twenty-three point eight million dollars, it's now up to thirty point three million dollars. Obviously, as the budget increases, the surplus, or the general fund is increasing, and that may be something the administration likes to, to have in there to keep our bond rating good, so that could be a legitimate decision that's made. But the point is, the mil rate is getting quite high, it's a huge increase, and the mil rate remaining the same has not yielded deficits in more years than not. It's actually keeping the mil rate the same, or just slightly higher, even lower one year, has actually yielded budget surpluses. So again, I don't feel this is a necessary increase, I think it's burdening our taxpayers unnecessarily, and I'm not in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Counselor Fishbein?
You know, it's unfortunate we find ourselves in this situation. You know, I have to hearken back to the last term. Choices were made as far as where ARPA dollars were spent. And now we're faced with what looks like the largest tax increase, certainly in most of our lifetimes. You know, the Board of Education is looking for additional money for more capital. Those things could have been dealt with in the prior administration. So, you know, one of the things that overall in this budget that I'm disappointed about is something that I've brought up quite a few times. Now, if you, you drove down, what street is that? Up from McDonald's, Cedar Street, I think it is? There's like a hundred and twenty people waiting to play pickleball over there. And, you know, I've been saying that we need more pickleball courts in this, this town. And unfortunately, nobody has listened. You would have thought that if this was a budget that advanced us, that would have been considered. You know, we talked about, or I at least brought up, the Highland School property, the frontage there where there used to be tennis courts, and, and they became a community garden, and somebody decided to rip that out, and, and now it's a grassed area. Certainly have a need in this town for that. We still don't have a pool. We've got a million dollars that's, that's set aside for, for the pool. If anything, we're regressing while we're having the largest tax increase in our lifetimes. That's not something that I can support. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't know if I was gonna say anything tonight, but I just kind of wanted to say a couple of things about the mil rate, and, and I'll repeat myself, so for those who are listening at home, if you haven't heard already. The mil rate increase that we are proposing isn't in line with the increase in what we're spending. And historically, if the mil rate has been lower or under thirty, part of that is because of what Counselor Fishbein pointed out, is that we didn't invest in fixing stuff so we could keep taxes low. And then if you start to look around and you, and, and we talk, you know, I'll own it, I was the one who made allegations that we are not dealing in good faith with people that we negotiate contracts with, but that's exactly what a lot of our built-in increases are, year over year. So unless we get some sort of boon in development, especially in the era where we are moving into our industrial park and turning it into a municipal campus, you know, we've already got the park and rec up in the, in the industrial park, we put the police station in the industrial park. And the police station, by the way, which now is up to the tune of forty million dollars or-ish, I don't want to speak out of turn, that's a million dollars added each year to our debt obligation. So each year, there's a million dollars that we're just gonna pay. It's in the budget. So yes, this is a tax increase, and no, I did not want to increase taxes on anybody. But you know what? I didn't want to also get up here and fund a budget with what's been called gimmicks. I mean, there's, there's, there's eight million dollars from the general fund in this budget, already applied. So that thirty million dollars is really like twenty-two, and I think if it gets down into the teens, then we're talking about our bond rating. But I would love, in the next year, for us to do some studies, maybe with the remaining ARPA money, I don't know, I'm not proposing anything, where we could look for efficiencies in general government, to Mr. Serradola's point. I would love to collaborate with the Board of Education to see where we can find cost savings and such. But having none of that happen and being presented with the budget in the way that we are, and seeing that, the majority of the money that the Board of Education, again, is requesting is specifically to the tune of about eighty percent, just to pay the people who are supposed to get raises, and whether we, as a town council, negotiate those contracts or not, we approved them all one way or the other, or actually, we didn't do anything, we just let them happen, we're obligated to pay them. That's the way I see it. So I view my job as to do what we are obligated to do, which is to tell people what things really cost, which is to responsibly allocate the money to what those things really cost, and to get out of the habit of taking money that we have in accounts and paying for things to artificially deflate our mil rate. It's a Trojan horse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testa.
I want to thank Counselor Reynolds for those words, especially the last couple of minutes of what he said. Insightful, relevant, and intelligent. We're, we're paying for expenses that we have. I would remind my colleagues that for the last ten years, more or less, we went through a, a period where the administration was adamant about zero percent contracts. We fought about this long and hard. One percent, half percent, blah, blah, blah. Well, things changed a little bit, and over the last couple of years, we've seen a number of contracts that have been settled at higher percentages. It was coming, and here it is. We look at the salary lines, and there they are. And as Counselor Reynolds pointed out, with the Board of Education, it's, it's plainly If you want to cut those, that budget, you're in effect cutting people. And this is across government. So the expenses, it was coming. The expenses are now, you know, the bill is coming due. The bill is coming due for physical plant improvements, as he mentioned, the police station and others, bonding expenses for that, and there's more coming. Doesn't matter if we try to find fault where it came from. The point is, here we are today, and it's, it is frustrating. No, I don't like saying we're gonna raise taxes at this degree. But again, it's our job to explain to the public why we're passing a budget the way we're passing it. What is in that budget? What's necessary? Where are these expenses? Yes, we can fight about a few million here, a few million there. But in general, expenses have gone up dramatically, and we have to meet them. So what I would propose, so I wouldn't propose. When we say that we, we can't support this because this is a historical tax increase, then I would ask, make a motion to cut it. I'm all ears. Not the board, we already talked about that. And we, I think we've explained very clearly the implications of that. Their expenses, as was pointed out earlier, pretty well documented. So you want to avoid a tax increase? Cut the general budget, general government budget. Go ahead, I'm all ears. Where are you gonna take it from? I have heard nobody propose a cut in the general government budget that would eliminate the tax increase. We're bemoaning it, we're not suggesting ways to avoid it, and I'm all ears. Where's it gonna come from? Police, fire? I don't know. We love promoting that, and I'm all on that. You can't take it from that. They need more money than we're giving them. Where are we taking it from? We have plugged holes with one-time money for years, and that's running out. CRA money's gone. ARPA money's just about gone. We are faced with the expense of running this town and paying our employees and paying the expenses for the infrastructure that has been crumbling, and we have a lot of money to spend. So our job is more, let's try not to go overboard, let's try to ease this in. But the budget's going up, and again, if you have a better idea, if, you know, it's one thing to say I'm against it, well, how are you gonna stop it? You want more pickleball courts? I'll vote for them. I love pickleball courts. I love, go ahead, that's more money. I'm messing with you a little bit, but, and I'm with you. You want more, you want, I'm with that. I want, we're gonna do, we want to do a skate park. Where's that gonna come from? Supposed to come from ARPA. We'll be fighting about that pretty soon. We have a million dollars left. We've been talking, we want that skate park. We talk about the million dollars from the pool fund. That's one-time money. You want to just apply it to this budget? That's a gimmick. And frankly, we are gonna do that pool, I don't care who you are, we're gonna do that pool. And you say we're gonna bond it, but we can't bond it till we bid it. So that million dollars that's sitting in the bank was put in there as a, an expression of the will of this council to do that project, to let the council know that we're still on board with that. And we will use that money to then do the studies and the bidding and all that. We'll spend that money, and then when we finally get a, a, a project cost, yes, we'll have to build, we'll have to bond the project. But that's not a million dollars that's just sitting there, you know, that we can I go off sometimes. I want to assure my colleagues, every one of you, I have the utmost respect for every single one of you, regardless of how I sound sometimes, and I apologize for some of the way I say things sometimes, but I respect all of you. And I, you know, we, this is difficult. This is difficult, okay? And again, if, if someone said to me right now, I'm gonna reduce general government budget by three million dollars, reduce that tax increase, I'd probably vote for it, and then we'll see what happens. No one's doing that.
So, you know, it's funny, because I hear, I actually really agree with what Mr. Reynolds said. I think that we have, in town, we have starved the general government side to the point where now we're facing a crisis in many ways. But I also feel like we're sort of inclined to fight the last war on the budget topic. The budget process from a council perspective has been radically different this year than it's been in the past, right? And the part of this budget is really belongs to the last administration because it's, you know, we do this process in May, the budget comes to us in the beginning of April, right? So, so the new mayor has essentially three months to, to figure out the whole budget. And I'm not trying to shill for the administration, but already, we've done more, the administration has done more in the past three months than we've done in the past three years, right? In terms of looking at, at town buildings, in terms of looking at, you know, all kinds of things in town, technology, we're looking at how to fix town buildings, like, these are the kinds of things where we need to be putting our resources, right? And this council has a really collegial sort of atmosphere, which I think is excellent. But I don't want to fight the last war because I think this budget is a unique thing, and I think next year, not that I know of anything amazing that's gonna happen next year, but I think that we're gonna, we're moving into a new, Wallingford's moving into a new era where things are not gonna be the way they were in the past. You know, I think the framers of the charter, set up the charter in such a way that the concept was that the mayor would want to spend money and the council would be the ones putting on the brakes, and that's sort of how it was written. Well, we had an administration that didn't want to spend money, and the council did, and so the system kind of hit a hiccup because it wasn't working the way it was designed. So I, I think that the new administration's taken a fresh stance, and I'm kind of happy with it. And so even though I haven't supported this budget, I kind of like the mayor's budget because even if it's not, if, if it's not perfect, you know, he took a stab at some things, he put a fair amount of increase for education, but we're also addressing a lot of the other problems in town that we haven't really looked at. So I just hope that we can keep these discussions moving forward. Education, police, fire, all, it's all been underfunded to some extent, right? And so some, unfortunately, we have to put on the big boy pants and kind of make up for some of the, the losses in the past. And if that means, you know, more money for education, then, then I'm willing to go where the data takes us. But I, I appreciate, you know, the, everyone's thoughtful words on this topic. Mrs. Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in regards to Counselor Testa's comments, I, I did figure out a way to get to the zero tax increase, just like I've done every year since I've been up here. And I, you know, to, to save not to touch the Board of Ed, I mean, that's two-thirds of the general government budget. So that's, I, I think you can't really say we're not gonna touch Board of Ed, but we're gonna, we're gonna hit everything else because that is two-thirds of the budget. But this plan actually doesn't touch Board of Ed. I wasn't going to present it, I didn't present it, and my, my rationale in not presenting the plan to get to the zero this year was because we have a new mayor, and I wanted to give the new mayor the opportunity to do with this budget what he saw fit. And so as Counselor Marone was saying, you know, he, he didn't have a lot of time to get into this budget. It's kind of largely written the same way as the last administration, just to the sheer fact of not having a lot of time to, to really do it. So I'm anticipating that next year, that'll be Mayor Savoni's kind of first year with the budget under his belt, and I, I'm assuming that maybe it'll be a little bit of a different, we'll see some, some differences going into next years. But if you want to hear the plan and, and you, you're asking me to present a plan and saying that you're gonna, that you might support it, so here's the plan to get to zero if anybody's interested. So I would amend the motion on the table to set the mil rate at twenty-nine point three four, which is the current mil rate. And the motion to get there would be that we reduce the general government salaries line by one million one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, one, I'm sorry, one million one hundred forty-eight thousand sixty-three dollars to account for unfilled, for unfilled positions. We reduce the electric division's salaries line by one million five hundred five thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars to account for unfilled positions. We use the million dollars that's in the pool fund. We reduce the pension, which was overfunded in the last budget year by five hundred thousand dollars. We reduce the contingency line by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we increase the amount that we are allocating from reserves by five hundred thousand dollars. That brings us to a zero increase with a mil rate of two, twenty-nine point three four, and that is my amended, my amendment to the motion on the table.
Can you clarify, you brought up electric division salaries?
Yes, so...
I don't believe that's a part of our tax structure.
It's not, but we could use that, so basically, we would be reducing that money so we can use that one point five million dollars, basically have the electric division divert that money into our budget because that's unfunded salary line.
I don't think that's allowed.
Okay, wait, let's take a step back.
Yeah, I don't think that would be allowed.
Because we've already voted on the budget, on the expense of the revenue line, so now we're setting the mil rate, so I don't...
All right, okay.
I think, Madam Vice Chair, your motion's out of order at this point because we've already, you're amending a prior motion. So the motion now is just to set the mil rate, which is sort of a function of mathematics, right? Because we know what the revenue, we know what the expenditures are gonna be, so it's really just setting the math, mathematics.
Should have challenged you earlier. But, no, but as far, to clarify, the, anything having to do with the electric division, their contribution to us is...
Yes.
Pretty much set in stone by ordinance, and we couldn't take any more of their money and put it into our, I don't think we could do that. But that's on a side note.
Mr. Chairman, there, there is, there is a way to do it. I did check with Electric and I did check with Town Hall, there is a, there is a way that that can be done. It's a little bit complicated, but it, it can be done.
Okay, thanks so much. All right, any comments from the public on the motion at hand, which is set the mil rate? Mr. Serradola? Mr. Shardula?
Thanks for allowing me a few more minutes. First of all, I want to associate myself with Councilor Tada's comments. I completely agree with where she's going. If you're looking for places to cut, let me just throw a couple of things out. We have a contingency account of $1 million.
Well, wait, just to be, just to be clear though, we've already voted on the budget and the revenue and the expense side. So now it's setting the mill rate. So let's talk about anything you want to. But just so we're all clear, we can't change the, we can't go back and undo the motion that was made.
I just want, I'll share my views. You do, do with it you will, you know? We have a contingency account of $1 million. If you look historically, we almost never use the contingency money. And by the way, we have a contingency fund. It's called the surplus. We do not need a $1 million contingency fund. It's, all we're doing is adding taxes. There's another issue, again, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. I brought this up in the past a number of times. Every year, we take $2 million out of the surplus. We put it in the cap nonrecurring fund. And I know some people, a lot of people agree with that, I guess. The only reason we're doing it is we want to pay cash for items that should be bonded. Why are we doing that? Well, every time you do that, it costs me, the average taxpayer, $82. If you bonded it, it would cost me $5 in taxes. Stop that practice. I wanted to address what Mr. Testa started to say. He said if anybody can demonstrate how to cut that amount of money out of the general government budget. I already showed you that in 2023, general government came in $5.4 million under budget. The numbers don't add up. It's, they're inflated. That's what I'm trying to express that. And I would say if you folks study it, you'll probably come up to the same conclusion. Last comment has to do with the demographics of Wallingford. Where is Wallingford going? There's a, I don't know if the council uses the state mandated audit report. Can I have a show of hands? You use a state audit report? Okay, the state, okay, Christine does. The state audit report was created by the state requiring municipalities to produce an audit every year. And it has to be sent to the state by January 1. There's a reason they did that, okay? It's right in line with the budget process. It gives you a chance to go look at the audit, and it gives you 10 years' worth of history about our town. And they do it for every town in the state. This body should review that at the end of the year. Suggesting, go take a look at it. But if you look at the numbers, Wallingford is shrinking in population over the last 10 years. We're down 2.6%. If you look at the number of employees in the town, they've gone up 8.4%. So the town is shrinking population-wise, government's increasing. That has to be addressed long-term. Education, the student population in the last 10 years has dropped 16%. Number of teachers has increased 6%. Now, I'm not arguing to cut teachers because if you look at the ratio, that brought the ratio to 10 to 1, 10 students to one teacher, which is perfect. Police department, we're up 10% on, I don't know whether they're police officers or administrators. But if you look at the statistics, arrests are down 25%. Parking tickets are down 70%. Traffic tickets are down 58%. But we're growing the PD, we're building a $40 million police station, and we took it out of Uptown, which I think was a big mistake, and moved it over to, I don't know where that word's at right now, but. And then Fire and EMS, their staffing's up 29% over the last 10 years. That's something that, I'm not sure I have an issue with that because we've beefed up emergency services and we need that. We have a long way to go, we have a lot to do. And I just hope that we'll address that in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Allenson, yes. Carmandee?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin? Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
I vote yes, the motion passes.
All right, next. I move to adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, as here in stated, well, as indicated on our worksheets. There are a lot of numbers, and I don't think you guys want to listen to me read them.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess a question for Mr. Sena. Considering that these are projections and that the capital contribution, contribution to the cap and nonrecurring budget is a calculation based upon revenue to the electric division. I don't know why I didn't notice in the past. Is it fair to say that the projection of cap and nonrecurring income is not part of this projection?
It's based on the prior years.
Based on the, I thought, I thought it was revenue. Oh, okay, that's interesting, so.
So they, there's a calculation that the electric division does based on last year's information that comes up with that amount. That would be a question for them.
Okay, so the number that we're dealing with this year is essentially based upon last year's booked revenue. Is that clear?
Correct.
Okay, so then it begs the question even stronger, why isn't that, because essentially it's money from the electric division, right? That we know right now, essentially, what next year's cap and nonrecurring contribution is going to be, right?
So again, that comes from them.
Okay.
It's a formula that they use by, you know, I think, I believe it's in, it's either ordinance or charter. I'm not, I'm not positive.
Yeah, I think it's the ordinance. But next year's cap and noncontribution will be based upon last June 30th of 2023's booked revenue, right?
Next year as well.
Yes. So what we're approving here is income expenditures, all of that stuff for next year, right?
Correct.
Why wouldn't we show, since we do have those numbers as part of this, wouldn't we be able to say, hey, next year, based upon the revenues last year, this is the cap and non-
No, it's based on actual.
It's what?
It's based on actual, not budget.
Yeah, it's based upon the actual revenues. But, okay, we agree that it's not-
So that number is in here. If you, if you're looking at the motion, the operating transfer out, 1739288, that's what you're going to see in the next motion when you approve the cap and non fund.
Okay, okay, that answers the question. So it is reflected there. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other questions from the council? Question from the public? Madam Clerk, kindly call the roll.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandee?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
And I vote yes, motion passes.
All right, I move to adopt the budget of Capital and Nonrecurring Expenditures Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 in the amount of $1,739,288 revenue per the mayor's proposed budget and $1,739,288 in expenditures.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion from the public? Let's do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move to approve special funds of the Board of Education of the town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, as attached here too and made a part here of pages A through C.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm sorry, did you get that, Madam Clerk? Motion passes.
I move to approve general, special funds of the town of Wallingford General Government for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, as attached here too and made a part here of on pages D and E.
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, kindly call the roll.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmandee?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Maron?
I vote yes, the motion passes.
I move to approve Capital Appropriations in Force Reserve Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024 in the amount of $89,734 in revenues and $89,734 in expenditures. This represents the amount as of March 31st, 2024, which may decrease as expenditures occur through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion? Madam Clerk, kindly call the roll.
Allenson? Yes.
Carmandee?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Maron?
I vote yes, the motion passes.
And finally, I move to authorize the chairman to sign three copies of the finalized budget, two to be filed with the town clerk and one to be placed in, on file in the Wallingford Public Library.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I believe that's it on the budget. Seeing no further business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.